Welcome, everybody. So I will call this meeting to order at 6:05. For those of you who worked here last time, we'll start off by introducing ourselves. Then we'll move into a public comment period. The main agenda item for tonight is that executive session, if it's voted on to go into executive session to discuss the issues that are going on. We were going to have a vote on the collective bargaining agreement at the beginning of the meeting, but we've not received the final version of that. So that is tabled for now. So as of right now, after we go into executive session, there will be no further business at the end of this particular meeting. So you're welcome to stay if you want. But after what will probably be quite a long executive session, we will just immediately adjourn. Okay, so I'm Jason Hamilton. I'm the Chair of the Board of Trustees. And so in this particular setting, all that really means is I'm just the one who's kind of the master of ceremonies. My vote's no more important or valuable than anybody else's on this board. And the board may adjourn.
I'm Laura Gates-Lupton. And I am the Chair of the Executive Board.
I'm Kate Thompson. And I'm Laura Gergo.
Joe Wilson. And I'm the Secretary of the Board.
I'm Torella. And I'm the Treasurer of the Board.
You were at Aglio by. And Hamilton tonight is sitting at the table who's the Senator on the board. So I will note that we do have form tonight. But there's no intention to get any votes tonight. All right. So we will start in just a second with the public comment period. If you signed up for public comments, I'll call you. The time limit tonight is two minutes. We are trying to get into executive session to give ourselves as much time as possible to discuss these issues. So as I pointed out to some people on some emails, as a board that takes public money, we are governed by open meeting laws. We can't have private conversations between board meetings. And we can't have private conversations unless we have a meeting and tell you why we're having a public conversation.
Wait, you guys can't have conversations outside of?
Two people can, but the board cannot. Because if more than four people get together, it constitutes a board meeting and we could have a vote. Right? So we can't get together and chat with each other except in this or in executive session. So in case you're wondering what's been going on behind the scenes with us since last time, absolutely nothing. Because it's illegal for us to have anything going on behind the scenes between us since last time. And so that's, in fact, the point for tonight is so that we can actually consider all the things that you've been bringing to us. So if you're frustrated that we're not answering something last time, we haven't talked about it. Because it's illegal for us to talk about it. Right? Until we vote to go into executive session and I tell you why we're going to executive session, we can't have a conversation. Okay? So I will also just point out that while I'm not talking about last time in particular, there have been cases where individuals in the school have actually had credible threats against their own person. And so I would ask us just to keep the level of emotion down a little bit. I understand if you're angry. And if you're angry, let us know you're angry. But when it gets to the point where the police are calling us and saying there's credible threats against people at this table, then things, I think, are getting out of hand. All of us are volunteer. We get absolutely nothing out of this whatsoever. We get no pay. We get no professional credit. We get absolutely nothing for being up here. And so if people start getting threats against themselves or their families, it's probably not going to be good for the longevity of individuals on the board. Because again, we have no personal gain from this. Our goal is to try to help this school be successful. And while we might disagree with each other, we're on the same side. Even if you're pissed off at us, we're still on the same side. All right. So first person, Chris DeSaglia. Two minutes.
Good evening, Chris.
I'm ready.
I'm Christopher Williams. And my daughter graduated from New Roots in spring of 2018. In light of the topic of discussion that was supposed to happen behind closed doors during the board's executive session, I'd like to make this statement and ask a few rhetorical questions. Last year, an employee was terminated under very suspicious circumstances and in violation of his rights under the collective bargaining agreement. According to public documents, this administration in Board of Trustees bought an Article 75 lawsuit against the New York State United Teachers to block this terminated employee from being granted access to any arbitration. A Compton County judge ruled against their lawsuit stating that the right of this individual's full access to arbitration. This administration in Board of Trustees immediately appealed that judge's decision to New York Court of Court where it now rests. According to the collective bargaining agreement, this administration has 100% control over the selection of an arbiter. If this is true, why is this administration in Board of Trustees trying so hard to prevent the union and this former employee from being granted access to arbitration? I thought this school prides itself in promoting the principles of social justice. I understand the concept of social justice to be that fair and just relations between the individual and society. Equality and fairness are also core values of social justice. Is spending tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars to silence a former teacher from being heard your version of social justice? Actions be proud of your words. Because open meetings law states that attendance at an executive session shall be permitted to any member of the board and any other persons authorized by the board. I have one last question for this Board of Trustees. I ask, may I, or anyone else in this audience, be authorized to attend your executive session tonight? Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is actually a question.
I hear you.
Chad. Chad Gates-Lupton.
Good evening. My name is Chad Gates-Lupton. I speak to you tonight as the parent of a New Roots graduate just as has Tina and at least for the moment, of a present New Roots student. I also speak as a psychotherapist who for almost three decades has worked with young people. I'm acutely aware of how a school's emotional environment influences students. At present, the emotional climate of this school is extremely negative, doing the great part, but not exclusively, to the elimination of the academic dean's position and the departure of Chris. New Roots has not simply lost an important administrative position. It's lost an extremely critical individual. Students and their parents are confused and anxious about what's happened and are wondering what will be the next unmerging event. A substantial number of students and families will likely not return to New Roots because of this. Sadly, we are among them. Various significant change in leadership decisions might alter our decisions, but unfortunately, I don't think that change is going to happen. I've known Tina since before there was New Roots. I've worked with her to foster New Roots successes and accomplishments despite the opposition this school has often encountered. I and my entire family want to see New Roots continue and thrive. But the decision Tina has made with regard to the academic dean position and Chris, which this board has endorsed, is profoundly ill-advised. As a mental health professional, like physicians, I am advised to do no harm. As educators, you too should do no harm. But harm is precisely what you are doing to New Roots students and their families. Would you give a word to this?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you. And I'll just remind everybody that anybody who has hard copies of their comments can email them to trustees@newroots. What's the email address?
Trustees@newroots.edu.
Yes. And that also makes sure that every single person on the board gets the hard copy. But we have this now. Thank you. Bill Martin.
Hi, I'm Bill Martin. And I am co-president or co-chair of Narcissa. And I'm going to get this in in two minutes. Maybe we'll tire 10, 15 seconds worth of room. We believe this is a critical moment in our school. The decision to remove positions, the positions of academic dean and assistant principal, and with it, an invaluable member of our staff has already had devastating impacts. Two staff members have already decided to leave. And that, we know of many of the decisions. Parents are mulling about removing their students from the school and already have taken place. These families, students, and staff are invaluable members of our community. And this trend adds an even greater weight to our concerns for the future of the school. This decision was predicated on the premise of retaining quality educators for our students. As of now, the morale of the teaching and support staff is in the basement of the faculty lounge. How this entire decision has unfolded, as expressed in our letter to the board, has been demoralizing and diminished most of the staff's optimism entering the school year. Now only six days away. We acknowledge that all the members of New Roots staff are dedicated to the school and its mission. We want to highlight one proposition, the restructuring process as it now stands going forward. The dean of students has been given the added responsibility of academic oversight for teachers, who will now have their own additional duties as this year begins. Presently, the dean of students has minimal experience in this role and added on to already a stressful and demanding job. As has been stated, we need leadership. That's a very important moment to have the wealth of experience and knowledge of an academic advisor. We need someone who can grow up from their experience quickly, not only to problem solve, but anticipate both opportunities and problems when they arise. We believe firmly this gives us the best chance to retain a level of commitment to our students as in years past. As I said, we are almost six days away from the start of school. We need our concerns to be forward and addressed quickly. And we thank you for this meeting. We all just want to get back to demanding Dr. Kovai to the show in New Roots. Two sentences.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. We just want to get back to demanding Dr. Kovai to provide students in New Roots as best in education as we can. Please provide us the opportunity by reconsidering the elimination of the academic dean and assistant principal position. So back to doing what we do best.
Thank you. Do you want to give the hard copy down? Or have you sent that to the board?
I will be sending it to the board as soon as I get back.
Okay. Laura Gates-Lupton.
I am reading tonight for Toby Selverman. He can't be here. These are her words, Stella. I was hoping to attend this evening and share this, and I find I simply can't muster the energy. Yesterday, my student Stella went into DSS custody in foster care after a six-week pin score hearing. I am emotionally spent, yet feel compelled to speak out after all I've been through. Stella spent the last two years at New Roots, and in spite of teachers, staff, administrators that supported her, she has dropped out. She is a bright student that struggled on various levels, and this is disheartening to us. I want to illuminate something that has not yet surfaced in these conversations. That is, New Roots being downtown and the safety concerns this presents in light of the drug and sex trafficking issues. Or how about mental health in the student body? I would argue that getting rid of an administrative position right now is a safety hazard. I would argue that more mental health support should be made available. I would further argue that there needs to be greater security to the building. New Roots students deserve to have, and quite frankly, many require, more eyes than fewer looking out for their safety and well-being. Now is not the time to cut positions. Now is the time to work together to create a safer school and a safer downtown. All are welcome to join me for a community meeting on Thursday night at the library at 6:00 if you would like to get engaged.
Thank you. Pat Eric.
Hi, my name is Pat Eric. I'm a lifelong educator who has been monitoring New Roots for the past 11 years. I'm incredulous that you have eliminated the position of academic dean, the person steering the academic progress for our students. From all accounts, she has a long history in the school and has received numerous advancements and is a capable and trusted individual who enjoys widespread parenting students support. I question the wisdom of maintaining several fluff staff positions and eliminating the one person at the heart of the New Roots community that might actually make a difference in the school's struggling academic performance. This is the worst possible decision you can make, and it borders on educational neglect. The most serious deficit you are suffering as a school is in the area of academic performance. According to the New York State Report card, even with data manipulation, the school's aggregate graduation rate is 62%. This is by far the lowest rate in the 24 school districts that you serve and one of the lowest in all of New York State. You have to ask yourself, why would classes that start out with 30 or 40 students? You have only 12 that actually graduate? Well, this is exactly what happened in 2017 and 2018. Your chartering agency has sent you a written warning that if your academic performance does not improve significantly within the next two years, this charter will not be renewed. Only one person in this room made the decision to eliminate the academic dean. My question is, what is she thinking? And why is this board allowing this absolutely reckless decision? The decision is not steeped in wisdom or made out of concern for children, but rather about something hidden in the recesses of the darkest, continually pervading decision-making process of the school's administration. I have copies of the Ethic Journal front page, December 2013. This is a longstanding problem. And this is an example of data manipulation that goes on right here.
Pat Sturich.
Got it. Thank you.
Jean Wells.
My first question, I know you're not going to answer me, but I just want to say it anyways. You mentioned the nature of board members getting together. So my question is, when Michael Lanza reaches out to our current liaison for a meeting in the middle of all of this to figure out where she stands, and then leaves that meeting and goes to have drinks with two of our board members, and Tina, is that illegal or just unethical?
So I don't know anything about.
Yeah, that happens.
I don't know anything about this incident. What I can say is that board members can't get together to talk about New Roots in groups greater than a corps, which is foreign.
So it was just unethical, not legal. Got it. What is the specific plan in place to provide the necessary full-time support and services of the academic dean to our students and teachers? Again, you can't answer that, but parents want to know these things. And you guys should be asking yourselves that before you make any decisions. Because we don't want to have, our teachers don't have this working. So figure that one out and get back to it. What is the chain of accountability from the board to the community? When there's a major consensus of the school population for a certain action, it becomes more responsibility to find a way to enact it. It was made very clear to you last night, this was last week, that the majority of the school wishes for the academic dean position to be restored. What is the chain of accountability from the board to the school community? Can we have that, like, in some sort of writing somewhere on the website? Because it feels like we just do this pointy shell and have no, there's no accountability to the parents or to the teachers for that matter. And we also want to know what's happening with the college courses, especially with the latest resignation. We're not going to have the staff. What's that? Of the teacher. The resignation of the teacher. We're not going to have the staff to teach the college courses that parents were promised. And then I want to say something.
And that's true.
Okay. Will the staff, after this one, after we lose this, are the staff going to be raided again by you like they were last time?
Thank you. Monica Bosworth.
Thank you. I just want to finish my comments from last week. I believe that this school deserves to have representation on the board of the main constituents, the main stakeholders in this school. I believe that the teachers and staff ought to be able to vote in a representative on the board, that the students should be able to do that, and that the parents should be able to do that. My experience of trying to connect with you folks before this all, in the aftermath of the elimination of the academic dean, is that there was no contact information for any of you. There was no contact information on the website for the board as a whole. There was no way to access you in any way, phone numbers or nothing. And that's a real concern to me. It seems to me that if we're going to be a school that has a mission of educating kids to become leaders in justice and sustainability, that we need to model that. We need to model what representative government looks like for them. You can't ask for a better education in government than that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That is everybody who has signed up for public speaking. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? So please come and put your name on the paper. And we can take it, you know, if you're working if you're able to sign up. And you can come to sign up.
Yes, I'm coming out.
Yes, please.
I'll comment.
Okay, thank you.
Tim Turchek. To begin with, I need to say that I am ashamed of my behavior here last week. I've worked really hard over the course of my life to not do harm to New Roots School. And I've not always been successful, but mostly I have. And last week, I did harm. And I'm sorry about that. I apologize to the New Roots community. And reflecting about it over the week, I want to personally apologize. I'm glad I had this chance to, Jason, who I don't always agree with. And I don't, yeah. But you have always worked. And when you're taking this conversation, creating an impression of your life is not fair. You know, here at New Roots, we attract the most vulnerable kids. Whether we set out to do that at the beginning or not, that's what it is. And there's lots and lots of vulnerable kids out there in the school. But in order to do that, you know, we promise those kids and their parents that we're going to provide a safe container for them. And then what I'm afraid of is that we keep firing the people who are providing the safe container. I mean, Jakim is wonderful. And anyone who's ever heard me speak about Jakim, he's got wonderfulness. But Jakim is Jupiter. He ain't Saturn. You need Saturn. You need somebody who can follow the rules. I did that work once here, seven years ago. And I was doing that in 16 hours days. And it was working, we were doing it. And what I meant to say last week, Jason, was you abandoned me because I was doing this work. It was happening. And you fired me, and you never talked to me. That was negligent. You took Tina's word for it, and that wasn't doing her any favors because she needed the dialogue. She, I mean, we needed, and it could have been fixed. So I was fired without discussion. And now here we are, seven years later. Chris, who is holding the center, was fired without discussion. Now, this isn't discussion. It's two-minute bits. This is not discussion, but it can be a beginning. So that's what these people want. They want to save place for their kids. And that's your job. No, you're volunteers. But it's a sacred duty here. Please, please, don't exercise that duty or, you know, let one of these folks do it. Because what it's about, it's about this school which we all love, however much we may dislike. And the kids that are going to come through here will desperately need this school. All right? So that's why, and again, I am sorry for my behavior last year. I'm not proud of that.
Thank you.
I didn't have anything prepared. Again, I'm not prepared. I had a few things to say in support of all the people. It was spoken. First, I want to take a minute in support of Tim Turchek. After he left the Dean's Soon's job here, he came to work where I work at Community and Exchange Residential Center up in Lansing. And he is one of the most passionate, competent, concerned, caring, detailed, oriented educators I've ever worked with. He took the concern and the energy of each one of the kids that he's dealt with up there and channeled it in the direction that has definitely benefited the new teachers. So I stand in support of you, Tim. And when you see him come here with your hat in your hand, you have nothing, your passion is not to be ashamed of any way.
Your time's up, and must be buried.
I really like this question. This is a question of, can we get a parent in this close session? You're going to go into an executive session to make decisions that will affect the future of the school very immediately. Because we all, those parents, know that basically we have a month to evaluate the next year of the school and then decide whether our kids are going to stay for the whole year or not. So the school needs to hit the downwind. And you're going to go into executive session with basically only one person in every works in this building. And that, everything that affects the rest of people in this building is going to be crumbled through that one voice. I think that was a weakness in the school that was addressed over the last year with the position that Chris held as a vice principal. And that position's now gone. So now we're back to having one person hold three positions. Although I got a tip of the hat from Mr. Martin that your idea is to put the dean of students, put the responsibility of the dean of students to be also academic dean, which is a terrible idea because discipline is one of the major problems that the school had. And I don't think the dean of students really got a handle on that last year. And I ended up asking him to do more. And maybe even try and plan a future for the same kids he's, this is what can you do today?
Jody Green.
Hello, I have a couple questions first, and then commentary from a letter that I did send you guys, but I'd like these folks to hear a little bit of that. A, question is, and again, I don't feel this right now, but, well, it was my understanding that Chris was the English teacher for quite a while. If she was just let go due to financial reasons, and that English teacher was just, you know, just left on her own accord, why was that not an option? Also, with the executive meetings that you do have, would it be something that you would think about allowing Laura to attend? Maybe not the rest of us, we get that, but maybe Laura could attend. It's definitely a good question. So, I sent a letter to the Board of Trustees, hoping you all got it. I sent it to just the one email address, I don't know if anyone receives that.
Everybody receives that, yes.
For me, my biggest concerns were surrounding my own life and my own daughter. I had very, very minimal communication throughout the year, which is very problematic for me. But for the most part, I wanted to get right here to the bottom, because I don't have much time. One, the school does not offer an in-school suspension, and that is due to staffing constraints, which is my understanding. My daughter did have numerous behavioral issues. She had many at schools this year, which are not in the best interest of the child. The school really didn't have any other alternatives, and the reason was because it didn't have enough staff. That's not okay. We asked one day, like, why isn't someone monitored for the front door so you guys can cut down on the skipping? These are parents asking these questions. And they did, they heeded that advice. Silly, because the parent has to offer this, you don't want to keep our kids safe. But again, because we don't have enough staff, but they could do it during the breaks, which is all you're asking for, because that's when people were milleried. The fact that they don't have enough staffing to do really basic things, and then to eliminate more staff, just seems asinine, for lack of better words. Thank you.
Neil.
I don't have anything prepared, I'm not quite sure what to say, but... I, somebody told me that there hasn't been a science teacher hired yet for the ninth and tenth grade, and I find that very concerning. There is like, three weeks until school starts, and I, as far as I know, do not have a teacher. And I just feel like it's weird to be eliminated in positions when you should be worrying about finding a teacher, worrying about preparing for the school year in the best way you can to make sure that your students actually have a future. I can't go without a science class. And even if I could, I wouldn't want to. I like science, I enjoy that class, they need a science teacher. And I realize that you don't have control over who leaves the school, but you have control over who you allow to stay. And I just feel like there's not much care being taken at that level. I don't really think I have anything else to say.
Thank you. Fiona.
Hi. Again, I am not prepared, because I don't really know what I'm saying right now. I'm kind of speaking from the heart, I'm going to try and curse. And teachers who have had me a pass, don't hurt the bad blood. But, um, what I want to talk about is how your actions are affecting us. The people who came to this school for refuge, for a better class, for a life outside of bullying and hatred, come here and lose the sanctuary that they've been given. They lose any hope of seeing a brighter future because of the actions that the board has decided to take, and the actions that the board has decided to take that lead teachers to say, you know what, I'm done, I don't want to deal with it anymore. And a lot of students are saying that now too. Because they're seeing what happens when the adults make decisions that they don't think about, that impact the students. In a long run, you guys will all be somewhere. We'll be the ones who are trying to live our lives, you're going to live your lives too. We'll be the ones who are trying to make a successful life after being royally screwed over during high school. And I love everyone over here, I love everyone over here, over here. What the hell? What are you doing, what are you thinking? There's a lot of questions, I know, because you're never going to answer us, because you're just going to go off to your executive, six-pash, whatever, executive meeting, and not talk to us about it. You're going to go to the shadows and not say anything to us until you've made another teacher go away. Because that's what you do, right? When you don't know what else to do, you just go, oh, you, you're not conforming to society. You're gone. Students came here to escape slavery and go somewhere where social justice is accepted and wanted? I'm not going to sit here and just shout, that the school's been terrible, I hate the school. No, the school's been great to me. Whenever I have problems, I've found most of the time people taking care of them. But it hasn't been the administration. It's been these guys. And now half of them are gone.
Thank you. Okay. So, that is the end of public comment period. Thank you very much. For some people, speaking in public is no big deal, but for some people, speaking in public is a huge deal. And I understand that, and I thank you all for earning the time to raise your hands and speak in this public setting. So, the next item on the agenda is to see whether or not we have the votes to go into executive session or not. And so first, I will raise the motion, and see if there is a second. And then I will ask if there is any discussion. And then we, if the vote passes, we go around to executive session. Just so you know, we, we, we as a matter, of course, don't take votes in executive session. Those, we do in front of everybody, so there's not going to be any kind of secret votes going on out there. As far as, I mean, I'm only one person. As far as expectation goes, there will be no decisions coming out of the executive session tonight. It's going to be discussion to figure out how to move forward. So, as I said in the beginning, you're absolutely welcome to stay. But there is, there's nothing, there's no expectation that there's anything going to happen afterwards. But if the board decides that it will issue a statement, then we have to do that, the voting procedures for issuing statements. Because remember, each of us are just individual people, but each of us thinks, doesn't make any difference whatsoever. The board is a separate legal entity from us as humans. So the only way the board can speak is by votes. And that's what we signed on to with the executive public meeting. Right, so I move that we go into executive session to discuss the employment history of individual individuals, and who's first? Second. Second in line, Peter Guard. Any discussion about this right now? Okay, all those in favor? And it is unanimous.
Will our parent make something, go ahead?
At this point, to start with, no. But if the board decides to invite people in as a group, then they certainly, they can. That's not my decision, that's the board's decision as a whole. So, in keeping with the president's colleagues work, we always start and adjust the voting of board members, sometimes Tina, and sometimes not. And then we invite people in if we want to talk to them, or else we have further communications with the people that we feel need more information from.
So how will we know that?
If, if we wish to talk to somebody and they're still here, then we might call them in. Or if they're not still here, then we'll have another meeting where we'll have a discussion with that person. Okay, so we're going to go to the second executive session now.